At this time, we will reconvene into open session. This meeting of Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees, June 22, 2001, beginning on time at 7:00 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to COVID-19 coronavirus, members of the public are encouraged to participate by watching the school board meeting online at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via electronic means consistent with the Texas Open Meetings Act and the Governor's Disaster Proclamations related to COVID-19 through proclamations, executive orders, and suspensions of Texas law. At least a quorum of the board will be participating in person, by video conference or telephone conference, in accordance with the provisions of Sections 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended by order of the Governor. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Melody Fowler in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please silence all cell phones, any electronic devices that may cause disruption to those around you. And now if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. So, next on our agenda, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. This time, I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for executive directors of elementary and executive director of secondary schools.
Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. At this time, I move that we ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Chapa. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mrs. Fowler. Motion by Dr. Chapa. You're promoted. And a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. The motion passes.
Thank you, President Mays. And I'd like to introduce and announce, even though they've already started working, as is ratification, our executive directors. So first, Dr. Stephanie Lee, Executive Director of Elementary Schools. Dr. Lee attended East Texas State University for Bachelor of Science in Communications, Texas Women's University for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, and Dallas Baptist University for Doctor of Education in Ed Leadership. Most recently, Dr. Lee is a principal at Peach Elementary, has also served as the principal of Roark Elementary, has been a principal in two different schools in Irving, an assistant principal, a fourth grade teacher, a third grade teacher, and a self-contained special ed teacher. Congratulations to Dr. Lee. Next is Claudia Morales-Erera, Executive Director of Elementary Schools. Claudia attended University of North Texas for Bachelor of Business Administration, Texas Women's University for Master of Ed in Ed Administration, most recently the principal at Carter Junior High, has also served as the principal of Hale Elementary, has served as an assistant principal in Dean of Students in New York, and has been a principal in Dallas and assistant principal at Dean of Instruction, and an elementary ESL and bilingual teacher as well. Congratulations to Claudia. Next, Grayson Topperzer is the Executive Director of Elementary Schools, University of Texas at Austin for his Bachelor of Social Work. Yeah, there's a pause for that, too. A&amp;M University Commerce for Master of Ed in Administration, most recently the principal of Ausley Junior High School, has been the principal of Fitzgerald Elementary School, has also been a principal in Garland, in two different schools, an assistant principal and a bilingual teacher in Garland, has also done English in Costa Rica, he's also been in the Peace Corps in Costa Rica, and has been in rehabilitative training services as well. This is part of his background. Congratulations to Grayson. And last but not least, Dr. Shavir Dala, Executive Director of Secondary Schools. Shavir attended the University of Texas Arlington for Bachelor of Science in Biology, University of North Texas Denton for Master of Ed in Ed Administration, Tarleton State University for his Doctor of Education in Ed Leadership, most recently the principal of Arlington High School, has been the principal of Gunn Junior High, has been an assistant principal at Arlington High, and a chemistry teacher at Sam Houston High School. Congratulations to Shavir Dala.
Congratulations to each of them. Next for our appointments, we have Consider Administrative Appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for Assistant Superintendent of Research and Accountability.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay. I've got a motion from Mr. Hogg, a second by Dr. Reich. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Superintendent for Research and Accountability, Dr. Natalie Lopez. Dr. Lopez attended UT Austin, thank you, for Bachelor of Arts in History, University of Texas Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Administration, UT Arlington for Doctorate in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies. Most recently, Natalie has been our Director of Research and Analysis, has also served as a Coordinator of Research and Evaluation, has been a secondary math teacher in HEB ISD, and has been a secondary math teacher at a charter school as well. So, Dr. Lopez, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you so much for the vote to allow me to fill the role of Assistant Superintendent of Research and Accountability. It's an honor. I want to thank Dr. Wertz for trusting me with the immense responsibilities of this extremely valuable and important role. I will not let you down. And I've been blessed with great leadership in my career, and to grow within AISD and to now become a leader of leaders here in AISD is an amazing opportunity. I'm forever indebted to my predecessor, Dr. Kevin Barlow. He, his mentorship and his guidance throughout the years have helped shape the educational researcher that I am today. And I know that I have very big shoes to fill. I want to thank Dr. Porterfield, Director of Assessment, and Kathy St. Gina and Effie Aguilera, their representatives from the Research and Accountability Department for coming out to show their support tonight, and my mom and dad, and also my husband Matthew for coming out for their support tonight, and each and every single day. I'm truly blessed, and so I'm very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you so much, y'all. And hook up horns.
We'll accept that. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Dr. Lopez. And would be remiss if I didn't recognize Dr. Kevin Barlow, who's led our department for a number of years. Dr. Barlow is retiring, as you know. So, thank you, Dr. Barlow, for your service. You're not gone yet, because we still have work to do, but just, I want to thank you for your service publicly. So, congratulations to you as well.
And I love to see family here supporting you as well, as well as staff. That says a lot. Okay. Next on our agenda is our public hearing for our 2021-2022 budget and proposed tax rate. We will open our public hearing on the 2021-2022 budget and proposed tax rate. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding the 2021-2022 budget and proposed tax rate?
No, ma'am. We do not.
Okay. Okay. The public hearing on the 2021-2022 budget and proposed tax rate is now closed. Next item on our public hearing is our Optional Flexible School Day Program, 2020-2021. Next, we will open our public hearing on Optional Flexible School Day Program. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And this is an opportunity to present about the Optional Flexible School Day Program. I'll turn it over to Dr. Wertz.
Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. During the 2020-2021 school year, 258 students were enrolled as flexible attendance students at the 600 New York, completing 1,117 classes. Ten additional students remained on their home campus for instruction. A total of 268 students participated in the Optional Flexible School Day Program. This year, 117 of those students graduated. 173 students are currently enrolled in either dropout prevention or at their home campus. Eighty-five students have dropped out. Those students are among the most vulnerable students in the district and include students who have completed all coursework but have not passed state mandated assessments. During the 2021 academic year, 93 students were enrolled as flexible attendance students at the Arlington Collegiate High School, participating in the Optional Flexible School Day Program. All of these students graduated in June of 2021. They were able to participate in a variety of college courses offered during their traditional school hours as well as non-traditional hours. The Optional Flexible School Day Program allowed students to participate in non-traditional course times that included evening classes, Saturday classes, and online classes. Students had the flexibility to take courses at Arlington Collegiate High School, the Dan Dyford Tech, Career Tech Center, multiple Tarrant County College campuses, and the University of Texas Arlington and Texas Wesleyan University. This flexibility helped all students to acquire their high school diplomas, as well as allowing most of the class of 2021 to earn their associate's degree.
Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding the 2021-20, I apologize, regarding the 2020-2021 Optional Flexible School Day?
No, ma'am. We do not.
Okay. We have no registered speakers. The public hearing on Optional Flexible School Day, 2020-2021, is now closed. I will continue, my tongue twisters. Next, we will open our public hearing on Optional Flexible School Day Program, 2021-2022. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And we'll turn it over to Dr. Wertz.
Okay. The Optional Flexible School Day Program may be implemented for students in grades nine through 12, who are, one, at risk of dropping out of school, two, participating in an approved early college high school program, three, or three attending a state-approved innovative redesigned school, or four, require an alternative academic route due to denial of credit in one or more classes because of not meeting state attendance requirements. For the upcoming school year, we will continue to rely on this program for our district's dropout prevention program, which is housed at 600 New York, and our early college high school students as well. And so, doing the Optional Flexible School Day Program will grant students these transformational programs and have access to a flexible schedule beyond that of the traditional 180-day, five-day-per-week requirement, including courses on the weekends, night classes, extended-day classes, and flexible schedules throughout the year to accommodate courses beyond the traditional 18-week semester. Under the Optional Flexible School Day Program designation, the school district may receive funding based on the actual time a student is in attendance, from as low as 45 minutes a day to a maximum of 10 hours a day. Minimums, minutes are accumulated to maximize the average daily attendance a student can earn during the 12-month period. Students must apply to participate. They must meet eligibility requirements and be afforded certified instructors in all educational services for which they are eligible, as well as comply with the appropriate assessments during the regularly scheduled assessment period.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding our Optional Flexible School Day Program for 2021-2022?
No, ma'am. We do not.
Okay. We have no registered speakers. The public hearing on the 2021-2022 Optional Flexible School Day is now closed. Thank you, Dr. Wertz.
May I ask you a question?
Sure. Dr. Wertz, do you mind returning to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Hold on. Hold on, Ms. Fowler. There you go.
Thank you. I had a question. You talked about the 85 students at the alternate school that had met all their course requirements, but they did not pass the state test. What are we going to do for them?
So, we do have some, we do have parameters within the law that allow us to address students who have no longer, who have not passed their assessments. We can have a committee that's formed if they've passed at least three, and if they have not passed at least three, then we can, we create an accelerated learning plan for them to help them pass their assessments. If their failure to pass an assessment prevented them from graduation was based on the last couple of years, which is now within the law, we have accommodations now that were recently passed in this legislative session that will allow us to accommodate them as well.
Okay. So, the, you talked about the accelerated, so they'll be tutored and get to practice and...
Yeah. All, we will provide them all the options that are available to prepare for the assessments. Prior to this school year, graduation was really contingent upon passing at least three of the five exams. The legislative session allowed, the legislation that recently was passed lifted some of the requirements that prevented students from passing star exams to graduate, and so we will apply all those new rules to these students as well. If they don't still fall within those boundaries and there are assessments that they have to comply with, we will provide them with the training and tutoring necessary to be able to sit for those exams and pass.
Great. Because I just don't want those students falling off and, you know, not completing their, their high school diploma.
For sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Now, we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of School Secretary, L.B.E.N.J.A.M.I@aisd.net, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No, ma'am. We do not.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda are our action items. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And so, we bring tonight a brief presentation regarding the 21-22 budget for your consideration tonight. As I've said before, and I won't belabor the point, but this is the culmination of a lot of different work and, and time that has gone into this budget. Again, thank you to the board for your diligence on the budget and the expenditures. And so, at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Moss to lead us through the presentation and seek board approval.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, President Mays, trustees. Very brief presentation. We've spent a lot of, of time the last few weeks going over the budget, and so we finally reached the day to the point to where we are required to adopt that budget. There were some items that you brought to our attention, and we'll share where we've included those in the budget that we're asking for you to adopt tonight. So, just going to share out the timeline again. On June 22, we've had the public hearing per, required by law, and the budget has to be adopted tonight. The next steps are, again, we do not have to adopt the tax rate tonight. We'll wait until we do the survey and receive the MCR from the Texas Education Agency, and once we do that, then we'll come back to you for an adoption of the tax rate in So, the items that were discussed and brought up by the board last week are, have all been included, and that's how the bottom line looks. We are proposing a budget deficit of $12.8 million, and the items that were budget priorities for the board are all included, as you see on that slide. I will point out that with that deficit, we've talked to, in our previous meetings, about SRR2 and the possibility of using those funds to actually stabilize our, our budget for next year. So, if we were looking at using those dollars, we would see a $2.1 million surplus. And so, the board is required to adopt the budgets that you see on the screen. Our general operating budget, again, we're proposing a $12.8 million deficit, just a small deficit on our food service funds. That's changed just a little bit with the health insurance adjustments that we made that were asked of us last Thursday. The debt service budget amount did not change, neither did the natural gas or the construction And so, this is just a picture of the budget at the functional level with all of the funds that are required to be adopted tonight. And all total, I think that's about $1,994 million that we're asking you to adopt tonight. And administration recommends approval of the 21-22 budget, including the general fund, food service fund, debt service fund, natural gas fund, and construction fund as presented.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Moss. Do I have any trustees that have any questions and/or comments? Mrs. Fowler.
Thank you, Miss President. Ms. Moss, on the sheet showing the proposed budget, the detail by fund, the social work service, does that include the, the people that we're going to hire for socio-emotional? Is that what that social work is?
I'm sorry. Are you talking about the one that I have up there now?
Yes. I think it's, it's number, or it has a 32 beside it, and it's social work service?
And so, some of that may be, but some of that may be spent under our, used for our SRR dollars for that.
Okay. So...
Our SRR3 funds, let me make, make that clear. We have SRR3 and SRR2, so our SRR3 may cover some of those.
Okay. But that's not what you're talking about here with...
No, ma'am. That is something that we typically have in the budget annually.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Do I have any other questions and/or comments from trustees? Okay. I don't see any. Do I have a motion? Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. Ms. Moss, we appreciate all the work that you and your staff have put into the budget, and I know last week, we included some additional items for your consideration that, that required some adjustments, and y'all worked to get those to us as quickly as you possibly could. I am very pleased with the way that this budget has turned out in what appeared to, at the beginning, to be a very uneven year filled with a lot of uncertainty. I think things have really turned out well. This proposed budget includes an increase of $2,400 for employees that are assigned to the teacher salary scale and targeted adjustments for those in certain positions to keep them competitive. Employees who aren't teachers are going to get a 4% increase to their pay grade midpoint, and we've got equity adjustments built in there for folks who are in positions that need those. We've asked for some changes based on a study to our STIPEN scale, in some cases substantial changes as a result of that study. We've asked for an increase of the substitute pay rates to be at or market-leading, and that's in here, too. And then, based on last week's discussion, we asked for a $31 a month increase to the district's contribution to the employee healthcare premiums, and that is in here as well. So, at this time, I'd like to move to adopt the proposed 2021-2022 budget by functional category as presented.
Good. I've got a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. We have our 2021-22 budget, and that does deserve a hand bump. Thank you very much for all the work that have gone on behind the scenes for months. Thank you for listening to our recommendations, taking them seriously, vetting them out, and then including them to be a part of this budget that we feel as a board definitely reflects the strategic planning of the district moving forward for not only the recognition of our outstanding staff, but also recognition of the things that we want to make sure can be provided to make sure that our students excel. So, thank you very much to your staff and everyone that has participated in this budget. I see that we're not going to see you again regarding the budget, and I know that probably makes you sad, but, well, once again, you don't have to tell us how sad, yeah. Don't, don't tell us how, how sad you are, because we also know that in a few months, you're going to be back at it for next month. So, for anyone who thinks you're going to get break for the next 10 months. But anyway, just want to say thank you very much. Thank you very much for the hard work, Mrs. Moss. We really appreciate it. Thank you. We do have additional agenda items. So, next on our agenda are items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Okay. I do see your hand. There you go. I'm going to turn on your mic. There you go, Ms. Bigmara.
Okay. I wish to withdraw Item C 2106-22029 for more discussion.
Can you repeat that number, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So, tonight, we will be considering the items listed on the agenda under Consent Items minus Consent Agenda Item under C 21-06-22-029. Ms. Moss, would you please share? Told you you'd be right back.
Thank you. So, we're bringing for your consideration tonight donations totaling $282,737. Our year-to-date total is $1,082,595, and the prior year-to-date total, as of June 23 of 2020, was $685,728. We have several bids on the agenda for your consideration tonight, as well as several items over the $50,000 threshold for your consideration. We are a July 1-June 30 district. We do not have a board meeting next week, so we're bringing those items so that we can, since the budget has now been adopted, we can start those expenditures in July. And we are asking, administration is recommending your approval.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Moss. Mr. Willbanks.
I move adoption of the consent agenda minus the item that's been pulled.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, I've got a motion by Mr. Willbanks, a second by Mrs. Fowler, to vote on the consent agenda, less item withdrawn, C 21-06-22-029. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Now, we will discuss consent items that were withdrawn. Once again, that was Item C 21-06-22-029. Mrs. Bigmara, would you like to speak to your withdrawal? Just press your button.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bigmara.
All right. I just had some questions regarding this item, which is Active Learning Cycle, Executive Coaching, Horizontal Laser Teams for Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development. I guess that would be for Dr. Wertz. Thanks, Dr. Wertz.
Hi.
Hi. So, with our partnership, we have a partnership with a company called Engage to Learn, and if I'm correct, we're in year four of that partnership. Can you just kind of give us a general summary of the work that we've done with them, where we are now, and then where we're headed?
Sure.
In our multi-year partnership.
Sure. It was intended to be a five-year partnership, but it turned into a six-year partnership simply because COVID kind of delayed us by a year. We have 24 campuses that have been initiated into our initiative of learning about the framework, which is really a framework that has five specific steps that embed 12 research-based best practices that are within those steps. Next year, we'll be onboarding, and we've actually started the onboarding process with 15 additional schools. 15 additional schools, and then in the following year, there'll be 24 schools, and in the last year, there'll be eight schools. So, in three more years, which includes next school year, our relationship with Engage will come to an end. Initially, when we started our partnership with Engage, they primarily provided the coaching of teachers in the best practices, and this is really around this idea that I can invite teachers to learn about the best practices in the class, I mean, in a, in a professional learning session, but they really need a coach side-by-side with them to set targets and goals around how to implement those in their classroom. Engage primarily provided those, but that's not really a sustainable model, because otherwise you would have to be married to this group forever, and that's not our goal. So, what we did is we have since transitioned now, and this was the plan at the beginning, to what we call a coaches' academy model, where Engage works with the coaches of the new schools. So, it's basically almost like a coaching of the coaches, who then work directly with teachers. And so, that will go on now for the, we have about three more years of that, and then that will end. They also provide coaching, basically what we call executive coaching, which is coaching specifically to principals, because their coaching is a little bit different than a teacher's, whereas a teacher is really focused on implementing the best practice in the classroom. The principal's really more about how to lead that work at their school. And so, that, that, if, that training has been provided to the executive coaches, which are principals. It has been like the area superintendents in the past. That, too, will be transitioned to the new executive directors and the area superintendents, who will coach the principals on the practices, and Engage will kind of like follow to the background as well. So, that's primarily the main roles that Engage has played. There is one exception, which is now grant-based. It's called horizontal laser team. That coaching is provided specifically to schools in the SSN network. There are eight next year that will be receiving this. It's all grant-funded outside of both SRR and local budget, and this is really focused on specific content areas of math and reading, and what happens is they engage to learn coaches' work primarily with teachers in their implementation of those best practices within those content areas, and we've seen really good success around those, actually. I, I highlighted Short recently as one. We anticipated Short to be a B. They've been on a, on a needs improvement list for quite some time, and they've been receiving HLT for the last couple of years, and a lot of the best practices have actually implement, have, have implicated their scores or the results they've been experiencing at their schools. That's kind of where we are in our partnership.
Good. So, if I understand correctly, the ultimate goal is to pass the torch, to gain, to gain great coaching practices, great instructional practices, to where we can eventually adopt their ideals in-house.
Well, we've already started that transition. The goal was never to stay with Engage forever.
Right.
Otherwise, we put ourselves kind of in a handicap. Our goal really is to put ourselves in a position where we build capacity in the system with their support, and then eventually, it's almost like a graduate release, they let us go. And so, our partnership was actually scheduled to end in five years, and we had to extend it by one year, because this year, we actually, we actually earned over 2,000 badges this year, but it wasn't as productive as we intended it to be, simply because COVID was so distracting.
Right.
So, we extended it by one year, and the very last year will only actually consume eight schools in terms of onboarding. The bulk of the schools will happen next year, which are 15, and then there'll be 24 more the year after that, and then we're pretty much at the end of the road.
Okay. And will a lot of these, will, these coaching sessions occur during PLCs?
No, they will occur, well, they'll occur during their, during the school day. Usually, they're scheduled, obviously, they're usually scheduled at a time when the teacher, it's between the teacher and their coach, and they're usually scheduled at a time when the teacher can actually dialogue about their instruction. So, sometimes it happens during their planning period. It could happen after school. It's really at the, it's a relationship between the coach and the teacher. It doesn't usually happen at a time where we pull a person away from a PLC group to have a coaching session. The appointments are made in advance with their coach, and they're typically scheduled, all touchpoints are scheduled at the very beginning of the year, so there is an expectation about when the coach will be showing up, what the conversation will be about, and when they can expect them to arrive.
Good. Since this is such a long-term partnership, and since we are knee-deep into our fourth year, what I really would just like to see is a pulse check from our teachers and instructional coaches, AISD instructional coaches, in regards to Engage to Learn's effectiveness with students.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Engage to Learn doesn't work directly with the students.
Right, right.
It's the teacher that does.
Yes.
But yes, we, we, that's actually part of our process, is to measure the impact that it's actually having. The only reason why it's been a little bit, I would say, difficult to measure at the onset of the partnership is because we've tried to provide lots of space for teachers to adopt the process and not mandated that they do every lesson that way, using every single best practice.
Yes.
And the reason we did that is we want to give adults the chance to grow and develop. Because of that, it creates very messy data. So, what you're trying to do is isolate and understand which specific thing is actually impacting student learning. We are at a point, next school year, where we will be able to isolate specifically how many teachers, and specifically which teachers are receiving, how many coaching sessions, how many badges they've actually earned, and what's the relationship between those badges and the outcomes kids are having. And we're finally at that place where we could do that. At the beginning of our partnership, it was just a little bit, I call it dirty data, only because what we didn't want to do is just say, hey, adult, you've been teaching this way for the last 30 years, we want you to do it this way tomorrow, and then measure. We wanted to give people space to grow, and so sometimes, some schools, and we allowed principals to have some flexibility, so some principals would say, do, do one cycle of six weeks, and other principals say, do one every month, and some principals, some, some teachers would do one every couple of six-week periods, and because of that, when we tried to assess that process, it became very, very dirty, and so we couldn't come to a conclusive idea about it. But next school year, we have systems in place to make that possible.
Yes, that would be great. It's really important that we're soliciting their feedback, because at the end of the day, they are, you know, the qualified professionals, and I just think that we need to really solicit their input.
Thank you, Ms. McMurra. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Is there a motion to accept this consent agenda item?
Is there any other discussion?
I don't see any questions or any other discussion. Are there from any trustees?
I'll make the motion.
Hold on, I think Ms. McMurra's light came on.
[laughing] I didn't know if anyone had anything to add. Okay, I, I move that we adopt item C 2106-22029.
Okay. I've got a motion by Ms. McMurra. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay. All present voted in the affirmative. The motion passes. Thank you. Now, we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you very much. We will continue to move on the agenda. Next is our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos.
Well, today's thank you will be for Ms. Moss again and her entire finance division for the first budget with that new team, so congratulations to Ms. Moss, and thank you to, to their work, and really the work of the entire department and division, finance that can report such a positive budget and have it in a way that can be adopted by the board. So, congratulations to Ms. Moss for her first AISD budget, and, and we look forward to many more. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do we have any trustees with reports? Okay, I see no lights. I would just like to very briefly say, as we move into July, just want to say to my colleagues, please enjoy your month. There will be no school board meetings in the month of July, but we will be attending quite a bit of training, making sure that we are continuing to gain knowledge in our responsibility of governing this amazing AISD. I would like to quickly just say I want to thank you to Frank Sack. Hello, Frank. Just want to say thank you so much for making sure that our board meetings go smoothly with the technology. No, I really am pushing real buttons. Every once in a while, if I miss a button, he's got my back. So, just want to say thank you so much, Frank, for what you do for us during these school board meetings. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No, ma'am, we do not.
We do not? So, it is currently 7:39, and this meeting is adjourned.[1772.54][1772.54][music]